Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, June twenty seventh. It is ten AM and all members of the court are present constituting a quorum and this meeting is called order. At this time, if everybody will please rise for the invocation, be delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall. I think that was a surprise.
And followed by the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner.
Your heavenly Father, we thank you for the stay, Lord. We count it a joy and a privilege, Lord, to serve the citizens of Harden County. Pray for your wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we make decisions. Pray that you'd be with our nation during turbulent times. Pray that you'd be with our military, Lord, our men and women serving, Lord, at home and overseas. And Father, we ask you to bless the all the employees and their families of Harden County in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Item number three, Linda Austin, County Clerk. Approval of minutes of prior meetings, Ms. Austin.
That would be a regular session on June the thirteenth, a public hearing on the June the fifteenth, and another public hearing on June the twentieth.
Salute. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by the court, good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking that the court release me of the liability of one million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. These were the vouchers that related to last court bills and payroll expenses.
Salute. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number five, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
For our cash record today in general checking account, we have three hundred sixty-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have five million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents. In our tech school general account, we have five million, five hundred five thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. For a total cash funds of eleven million, seven hundred nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. The tech school rate on Friday was zero point three six.
A whopping.
A whopping, zero.
May we approve the cash statement?
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Debbie. Item number six, Angela Gore, County Auditor. Payment of county bills, we have Candace McKennie sitting in for Ms. Gore this morning, good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen were forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-four cents. The pre-approved expenditures for June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen were eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and two cents. And today, June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, the expenditures for Commissioners Court are one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Total expenditures and transfers are a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Gross payroll for June twenty-third, two thousand sixteen was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. FICO was thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Retirement was fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents. Total transfers for the June twenty-third, two thousand sixteen payroll was five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, introduction of newly hired personnel by the department heads. First, we have Ms. Rachel Killingsworth, Rachel, if you don't mind, please stand. Rachel is our new collections coordinator. She'll be working with Debbie and helping her in human resources as well. And you live in Village Mills, is that correct? And I think she's been with us right at two weeks, is that right? Well, you're starting your second week. So it's close. And we welcome you to Harden County, thank you Rachel. The next introduction will be by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to introduce Sarah O'Reilly, a new clerk.
This is Sarah O'Reilly, she's our new clerk, she's been here about three months now. She's doing a really great job, she's working on vouchers. It's hardly something new you ever had.
Well, that won't change. Welcome to Harden County. And next, we have Toya Acridge with the Health Department, to introduce Regina Bolton, the new sanitation inspector, good morning.
This is Regina Bolton, she comes to us with about twenty years' experience in restaurants and schools. And she's bringing a lot to the table, so we're gonna start teaching classes throughout the county for managing certificates and bring some extra flow, cash flow to the county as well.
I'd love to hear that.
She's doing really good.
Great, welcome Harden County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, special recognition of personnel by their department head for meeting years of service milestones as follows. First is James L. Poland with Roden Bridge Precinct Two for twenty years of service, Commissioner.
I've got James's certificate and will be presented to him at a later time.
The Commissioner wouldn't let him take off from work to come in, so.
We're trying to catch up in the rain.
So he's gonna handle that, thank you Commissioner. Next, we have Donna Miller with Indigen Healthcare for fifteen years of service, Linda, you wanna handle that?
Sure, I do, I'm so proud too. Any of you that don't know, this is Donna Miller, and she is with our Harden County Indigen Healthcare Department. And she very much deserves to be acknowledged and recognized for fifteen years of service. She's awesome with our Harden County residents that need help with their healthcare. She is also an advocate for the court, for the county, for the taxpayers, just an awesome, awesome person. We have the good, the bad, and the ugly. And on those bad and ugly days, it makes us appreciate those good days even more.
Yes ma'am. Congratulations. And last, we have Mark Benson, Sergeant with the Sheriff's Office for ten years of service. The sheriff informed me he couldn't be here today, Mr. Benson, and asked us to put that on the July eleventh agenda, so we will, we will take care of that at the next meeting. Item number nine, Debbie Mendes Sable, Human Resource Director. Discussion and possible action to approve additional benefits for Harden County employees as follows. Air Med Care and Allstate supplemental benefits. Good morning Debbie.
Good morning. We have two new benefits we'd like to offer our employees this year for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen plan year, beginning December one. The first is air med care and the other is Allstate, which is supplemental benefits. I have Linda McCluskey and her, uh, come on Linda. And Allison, she's the program director, they like to talk a little bit about their programs.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I don't know if you, from the last meeting, kept your folders?
I did.
Okay, because I have additional ones here if you need them.
I've got my.
I'd like to introduce our new program director. I shouldn't, she's the new program director, but she's been with the company eleven years. She's our critical care nurse and has flown on many flights, but she's our new program director and I wanted to introduce you to her. And it's Allison Nickum Smith. These are our commissioners and our county judge and.
Nice to meet you.
Good morning, nice to meet you.
Good morning. Oh, okay, thank you.
Well, from what you remember, do you have any questions or would you like me to go over it again?
I don't have any, and I, I just wanna add that Debbie had put out a memo to all of the department heads and I think they all shared that with their personnel and there was a pretty good response for the services that you would be able to provide. The reason that this is December first is that is our open enrollment date, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, so that is the reason that this couldn't be done before then.
Right.
But I don't have any questions, does anybody on the court?
Well, if you should come up with some questions, there's a lot of literature around that has my phone number. Pick up the phone and call me, you may see me here in the courthouse, I'm around. I live in ranchland and the service that we provide is really good when you need that kind of service. One of our taglines is, we're the best thing to happen on the worst day of your life. And it really is, is true. A lot of lives have been saved and limbs, so, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you ma'am.
And I'd like to introduce Mr. Andy Kelly with Allstate for supplemental benefits.
Morning, Mr. Kelly.
Morning, everyone. Um, as I do know most of you and as you know, my wife and I have an Allstate agency in Lumberton. And this is actually something I do separate from that agency. I'd actually done it years ago, worked with a friend of mine doing Allstate benefits and so you can have a better understanding. You always hate to use the analogy of, of the competition, but Aflac. Most people think Aflac when they think supplemental benefits or colonial. Uh, we do the same thing, the same type benefits. And I'm not exaggerating it, I wouldn't even be doing it if I didn't think we'd do it better. The one thing I know is that when we come in, and this is from going in enrollment after enrollment, regardless of who you currently have your benefits with, we will strengthen what you have, we will give you stronger benefits. When you're talking five to seven dollars per pay period or, or per week for the premiums, you're not talking about a lot of money, so there's not a big cost saving factor there, although we have seen that typically we do save them a little, the employees a little bit of money. But more importantly, again, we do give them better benefits. That's the good side of it, the better side of it is the group that I work with, Starnes, Osborne, and Associates. We have done this for so long and my managing partner Rodney Starnes has such a wonderful working relationship with Home Office. They have given us a special letter of underwriting that we can go in, and I'm gonna use the cancer policy as the, as the basis for this example. Anybody can go in, no matter what company they're with, even though they're Allstate enrollers, they can go in and do a guaranteed issue on a group this size if they have on that cancer policy twenty-five percent or more of all the employees participate. Now that's sometimes hard to get those numbers. The special letter of underwriting that our group has, all we need is five applications to get guaranteed issue. That's a blessing. That, it, it's actually incredible that they give us that. But that's true on the critical illness, which is more heart-related type things, the cancer policy and the accident policy. So all we need per policy is five applications to get guaranteed issue, ten on the short-term disability and life insurance. I'll give a quick example, I had told the, the two Deibys and the judge when I met with them. And I said, you know, I don't care if I do anything else right the rest of the year, but we, we have always done the benefits for the last fifteen years at least for all of the cowboy dealerships locally in Austin, San Antonio. When we got this special letter of underwriting, we went back to them and said, hey, we would like to reward them by being good customers and go back to them and give them this opportunity to participate in guaranteed issue, they allowed us to do that. My last day there cleaning up, getting the stragglers so to speak, I sat down with a twenty-eight-year-old who said he was just gonna sign off. And I, I looked at the notes and I said, well, you weren't even here during an open meeting, you were on vacation, you don't wanna at least hear about it? He said, Andy, I can't do it anyway. I found out two months ago I have leukemia. I said, I said, sit down, you're the guy I need to talk to. And I wrote for this twenty-eight-year-old a guaranteed issue cancer policy and a guaranteed issue hundred thousand dollar life insurance policy that nobody else would've been able to do. So I said, I don't care if I do anything else right the rest of the year, I felt good about that. So, again, I, I don't just think, I know that will strengthen what the employees have and Debbie and I talked about it in length. And, and because it is voluntary, they have the choice to stay with what they have with Aflac or to change those benefits over to Allstate or do both. Or they don't have to do anything at all. But I do have, I'll leave these with each of you and you can look over them, but it's just a sampling of what we do offer on the guaranteed issue side.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, any questions?
Do y'all do short-term and long-term?
Thank you sir.
We do short-term, not long-term.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I will say this, that Andy wrote my mother an insurance policy thirty years ago maybe.
Just had to go thirty years.
And, and whenever my mother passed in November, it was a great blessing that you had sat down and visited with him so many years ago, so I appreciate it.
You had remarks on our, to me about that, but I think the one that impacted me more than you from was your little brother and his, yeah.
Yes sir, absolutely, been there for me two times at least, so I appreciate it. All right, any more discussion or questions?
I just have a question, I guess.
Yes, Mr. Pelt.
You're, you're a Debbie. Is it my understanding what the court is being asked to possibly take action on is to allow AirMed and Allstate to participate in our sign-up period during December? And if an employee so wishes to go with one of these, then do a payroll deduction, is that what we're being asked to do?
Yes sir, and just to let you know, Debbie sent that letter out to, to all the department heads, I think there were about fifty employees interested in the AirMed Care and there were twenty-five or so interested in Allstate benefits, is that right?
I think I had about eighty that branched into the AirMed, probably around forty, fifty in the Allstate.
Okay.
Move approved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kelly and Ms. McCluskey for your time today. And I think the next thing that will happen, Debbie will put a memo out to all the personnel and if anyone's interested in having a meeting, then Mr. Kelly or Ms. McCluskey will, will either have one big meeting or, or talk to each of the employees one-on-one so that they're ready when it comes time for open enrollment. Number ten, presentation by U.S. Capital Advisors LLC. Financial advisor for the county, as to Harden County, Texas certificates of obligation, series twenty sixteen, also known as the certificates. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Jim Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors, we, Thursday, we received bids, bids for the county's certificates of obligation in the par amount of millions, sixty-five thousand dollars and we, uh, received six bids, which is indicative of great interest in the county's paper. And the best bid was one point three-three percent submitted by Trustmark. Uh, we, in, in an email I'd sent to the judge, I think some, some or all of the Commissioners were copying, that we had used when I appeared before you, an estimated planning rate of, of over two percent, I think it was about two fifteen percent, so this is well under that. Uh, and the county should be very pleased with, I am, and I, as I, I mentioned to the judge and Commissioner Pelt, uh, just down in the hall, that, uh, we were very fortunate because it happened right about the time of the, of the British exit, uh, or stay vote. And we all need to take credit even though it was blind luck, so. But that was very fortunate because the market was skittish, they, and there was selling of, of, uh, stock positions and when that happens, the market tends to go to bonds and that drives up the prices of bonds and, and lowers the yield. So the county was, uh, was a beneficiary of that economic event. And so, unless you have some questions, I'll turn it over to the next item on the agenda, which I think is Guy Goodson or somewhere down the road is Guy on the agenda, but happy to answer any questions you might have. The only other comment I would make is that if, if you approve this action, you should be receiving, uh, cash in the bank somewhere around the first of August.
Thank you, Mr. Goodson.
Thank you.
Number ten, discussion and possible action to award sale of certificates under terms and conditions approved by the county.
Thank you Judge, Guy Goodson, the government firm, uh, again, appreciate the opportunity to, to represent the county in this financing. Again, Mr. Gilli and U.S. Capital Advisors did a wonderful job in getting to the market at a very opportune time. Uh, as noted in the spreadsheet there, or the presentation material, Trustmark Bank was the purchaser of the certificates. Uh, we have provided your proposed order, which would be the next agenda item, as well as the certificate purchase agreement and a private placement letter to Trustmark and its legal counsel. And we will ask that the court adopt both of these two next agenda items so that we can proceed with finalizing any negotiations with them. We don't anticipate any substantial changes, Mr. Gilli's firm put together a very detailed spreadsheet, there won't be any changes in the interest rate. We did though, set this thing up where they could take ten serial maturities, as we mentioned in the public hearing, the other day of the bonds, or they could take one term bond. Basically, the difference is, is they just have one certificate naming them as the owner, they are not reselling this into the marketplace. Uh, and even if they decided that they wanted to parse it out at a date in the future, it has to be in denominations of at least a hundred thousand dollars, which means we're only gonna be dealing with banks or very sophisticated investors. But their counsel at Andrews Carthage Houston may have some very minor, uh, changes as we've run into before when we've done transactions of this matter. But again, uh, we're very happy with this. Uh, some banks could have acted as their own, uh, what we call paying agent registrar, you know, held this for their own account. They did not wanna do that, which some of the banks do, so we have recommended, and again, we'll get a sign-off from them on this, that y'all use Bank of Texas, uh, out of Austin, Mr. Jose Gattan, for your refunding bonds. Uh, I think y'all have good luck with them, so we're going to submit to, uh, Trustmark, uh, paying agent registrar agreement for, uh, Mr. Gattan and their firm out of Austin to, again, act as your paying agent, keep everything consistent with all your debt serious, which we do appreciate them, they could've designated someone, but they were happy to let you all. And so we would recommend that we just follow form and use your signed paying agent. Should be a fairly simple transaction for the paying agent registrar, but again, uh, we're very pleased, uh, with the transaction as presented and would ask the court's approval, uh, for the next, actually, the, uh, the next three agenda items. The next two are specific as to documents, the final one allows you, uh, the clerk, uh, the county auditor or county treasurer, whoever else, to, uh, execute any documents. I will get with Angela and Debbie just to see, as I mentioned to you beforehand, the only thing we expect that our Attorney General, who has to review all of our bond transcripts, may ask, is that we certify the, uh, fund balance, uh, as of a date. And, and, and whatever is easiest for Debbie and them, I don't know if, or, or Angela, if they do that at the end of a month. I know we have it as, as of the end of the fiscal year, but they may want something a little closer to the closing date since it'll be August. So we'll, we'll work up a little certificate that just says, as of this date, uh, the county fund balance was an amount and certify that and, and also in the document, we've already advised what it was as of the end of the fiscal year. So, uh, we'll just get with Angela and Debbie on that and make sure we get that done. But just to let everybody, uh, who are reviewing the agenda know why we have sort of a generic thing as our last item is just because we, uh, will necessarily be required to, uh, make certain certifications to the Attorney General. So we appreciate the court's consideration of these next three items and thank you again for letting us work with you on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Goodson.
I may we award the sale to Trustmark National, second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action to approve an order authorizing the issuance of Harden County, Texas certificates of obligation, series twenty sixteen, specifying the terms and features of said certificates, providing for the payment of said certificates of obligation by the levy of an ad valorem tax upon all prop, all taxable property within the county and resolving other matters incident and relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of said certificates, including the approval and execution of a paying agent slash registrar agreement and a certificate purchase agreement and providing an effective date. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to approve certificate purchase agreement and private placement letter as to sale of certificates.
Salute.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, discussion and possible action to authorize county judge, county clerk, and/or other county officials to execute and deliver such certificates, agreements, affidavits, notices, and documents as may be necessary to proceed with the issuance and sale of the certificates and authorizing the said county judge, county clerk, and/or other county officials to take such, such action as may be necessary for the issuance and sale of the said certificates.
Salute.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you Judge, thank you very much, and we will get these documents finalized, just wanna make sure, I know this is a holiday-intensive time of the year, but so we'll make sure we get with you, uh, again, I guess Angela's out, but, uh, with, with the county clerk, uh, and if necessary, the treasurer, make sure we get these things to y'all this week and get them executed off to the Attorney General.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Goodson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, appoint a committee to recommend interior design finishes for the new courthouse annex building. Uh, I'd already talked to Commissioner Cooper about chairing that committee since he's the project manager. Also asked Linda Davis to serve and she's agreed, as well as Latasha Jones and Monica Kelly, and that's my recommendation for that committee.
Salute.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Commissioner Cooper, if you'll just let me know when y'all will be meeting, I'd like to sit down on that if I'm, if I'm able. Number sixteen, discussion and possible action to purchase property proximal to courthouse square from Patricia Hayes Donaldson for future use. The property description is as follows. Lots fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, block ten of the original town of Coontz, as recorded in volume one, page one twenty-two, plat of records of Harden County, Texas.
Salute.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion?
Has anybody approached Ms. Donaldson yet?
I think that Mr. McCam had talked to her back when we were, uh, speaking with Ms. Richardson about the two lots that we purchased. She is interested in selling and, uh, we do have an amount budgeted, I'm not sure if, if we have enough, but if not, we're gonna come back to the court and discuss that before the purchase is made.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let me go back to number fifteen, I wanna thank you Linda for agreeing to serve on that committee. Oh, Latasha and Monica are not here, but thank you very much. Number seventeen, acceptance of annual road reports for all Roden Bridge precincts, I think everyone has copies in your packets. Is there any questions about those, if not, I will make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion by the Chair to accept annual road reports for all Roden Bridge precincts and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eighteen, Commissioner LW Cooper Junior, precinct, discussion and possible action to approve architectural plans for future aircraft hangars at Hawthorne Field, Commissioner.
Thank you Judge. Uh, I will just say before, uh, I move on this next item that, uh, after the first of the year, if I remember correctly, the judge had asked that, uh, my secretary take over the, uh, operations as far as vouchers and day-to-day, uh, operations of the airport. And, uh, he has done so and I think he's done a very good job, uh, part of our, uh.
I'll agree with that.
Thank you Judge, part of our, uh, policy and procedure is that before, uh, the plans have already been approved by the court, before we can start any further action, this, uh, these plans from the arch tech has to be approved and each commissioner has a copy as well as the judge, and I would move that we accept, uh, the approval of the architectural plans for future aircraft hangars.
A second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number nineteen, Commissioner LW Cooper Junior, discussion and possible action regarding the following budget amendment in the amount of two, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents from zero one seven, six two one, three nine five, prior year surplus carryover, to zero one seven, six two one, five seven zero, equipment purchase. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty, Dana Hall, District. Number twenty, Dana Hogg, District Clerk. Permission to accept donation and amend the district clerk's office budget to accommodate the donation and expenditure as follows. We have it worded a little incorrectly on the agenda. We already have those, these two line items in the district clerk's budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All we need to do is agree to accept the nine thousand dollar donation and place it into zero one zero four five zero three five five, donation furniture and fixtures, which was created on February the tenth.
My second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, or Commissioner Cooper?
Ms. Hogg, I would just like to ask, you're a donor on this, would they like to remain anonymous?
Yes, they would, well, I didn't specifically request, but...
Your feelings are they wish to remain anonymous?
Thank you.
We just wanted to recognize them if they wanted to.
Right, right.
And we do appreciate it. Any further discussion?
And there are no conditions attached to the donation, is that right?
That's correct.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one, Commissioner Alvin Roberts, Precinct Four. Discussion and possible action for approval to stabilize and seal approximately one hundred yards on Wingfield Drive located in Precinct Four.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-two, Commissioner Ken Pell, Precinct Three. Appointment of Barbara Campbell Hughes as Commissioner of Hardin County Emergency Services District Number Three to fill vacancy left by the deceased Herman Haris.
This is the recommendation of the U.S. D. Board there, and I move that we approve it.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, Misty Sims, purchasing agent. Permission to solicit bids for disaster, emergency ambulance services, emergency mortgage services, and sanitary facilities. We don't have a new employee, we just have one with a new name. Since our last meeting, she's become Mrs. Sims, so congratulations on that, Misty. And just wanted to clear that up in case there was any confusion.
I looked at it and said, Misty Sims.
I thought that might have happened a few, in a few cases. All right, we have a motion for this item from Commissioner Pell and a second by the chair. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-four, Misty Sims, discussion and possible action regarding awarding of bids for purchase of materials for all Roden Bridge precincts. Misty?
Back in March, on March twenty-first, we awarded Roden Bridge Materials. And at that time, the court awarded first award for limestone base to Vulcan at the plant for twenty-two dollars a ton. It has become to our attention that we can get limestone base at Knife River at the plant in Sour Lake for twenty-two fifty a ton. That's closer for some precincts, and they don't have to take trucks to Belmont. So I guess we're asking if y'all want to award another one.
So we're making a modification on the original awarding of bids in this one line item only? I mean, this one material?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-five, Misty Sims, discussion and possible action regarding awarding of bids for construction services related to community development block grant disaster recovery program, Coombe Marsh Gully Channel Improvements, DRS number two-two zero 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 two.
We need to table that, don't we, Judge?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Move it to table.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to table, and that'll be ready for the next meeting?
Yes.
To the July the eleventh Commissioners Court meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously to table item number twenty-five to July the eleventh.
So moved, we're adjourned. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. We're adjourned. We do?
You do?